Positive thinking is better than negative thinking, if you ask me. So if you got nothing, if somebody told you to think positively, that's still fine, I think. But there is a big leap between positive thinking and faith thinking. Just because you sit here and say, "I will have 10 million dollars by next year." That's not going to happen, you know. What is God's will for your life? Where are you headed? What are you supposed to do? What are you going to do? What is your call in life? Are you living for God? Are you seeking to do what God wants you to do? If you go in that direction and you believe that this is what God wants me to do, this is what God has promised, this is where I'm going, this is what I'm doing, then you begin to speak it. Because yet some people think that I only preach prosperity. And some people have tagged me as a prosperity preacher, or he's a prosperity preacher. Yeah, I have preached on prosperity. I have preached on prosperity for 20 by 30 weeks, 40 weeks. What is church there for? It is to address these problems. We need to address these problems. We need to help people get over these problems.
So these are some of the very precious moments generally we don't get, to ask question to great men and generals of faith. Very rare moments, I believe it will be very edifying. So please settle down and listen to what they have to speak over from 40 over years of ministry experience. So first question, Pastor, Your faith is very important to people. It is very important to them. Why do some people have to sacrifice their lives during difficult times?
Some people said it is correct. Some people have been in the middle of it. We have a strong Pentecostal background. They tell us in their house, they tell us stories. They don't even look at our faces in their houses. Because in the Bible, all of Canada is covered with trees. And they are all covered with trees. They don't even look at our faces in their houses. They don't even cover their heads with trees. They just put their hands on their shoulders. They are strict in this regard. They don't even shave. My daughter, when she was little, she was wearing Canada robes. She was wearing Canada robes, and when she was 83 years old, she was wearing them. Correct. They read the Bible very well. There is no problem for them. They were in the orphanage of Amy Carr Michael. When they were born, they went to a family in Christchurch. When they were 12 years old, they asked Amy Carr Michael about suicide. They gave them a small child. They went to their home, and they went to their mother's house. But later on, they went to Pentecostal schools. They had a lot of legalistic ideas in them. They didn't have to shave their head. They didn't have to do aftershave. They didn't have to do any of that. They didn't have to shave their head. They just did a lot of things. When I was in America, I was in one of their homes. I was the first one to shave my head. They didn't shave my head. They didn't shave my head. They shaved my head. They shaved my head. Then when it came to Christmas, they gave me a nice gift. I was scared to shave it. They said I was going to die. But I couldn't accept it. Then I went to New York City University to study. When I was studying, I was in an unsafe area. When I was in that room, I would shave my head. When I was scared, I would shave my head on the table. One day, I forgot to shave my head. I bought a new TV. I didn't see anyone else doing it on the road. Today, I turned my room into a TV watch. I completed my life. How long have I been in this world? It's been 78 years. I've been in this world for years. Whoever says something, I'm going to shave it. I've been in this world for years. But I couldn't do it. The circumstances of the past have made us struggle. It was difficult. It was a delay. If someone says something, I'm going to shave it. You have to think carefully. You have to choose correctly. I did everything. I decided correctly. I decided to shave it. I decided to shave it. I knew it well. I just shaved it. Faith teaching is also like that. I forgot the total difference. I forgot the difference. I didn't have a clue. I watched it for a long time. It was very practical. It was very clear in the Bible. Then I did it. So I could clearly practice it. So faith, I can clearly practice. So it doesn't take too long to do it. I don't blame people for this. They have time to do it. Whatever I say, you read the Bible. You can do it. You can do it. But you should think about it. Take your time and think about it. Do it. If you want, leave it. That's what I'm saying now.
Amen. Praise God. Wonderful vision. Pastor, you said that we can't twist God's hand by fasting. But on the other hand, when we read the Old Testament, there are some instance, they have quoted Hezekiah when he was given a death sentence, but 15 years he could pray, fast, and it was turned back. And also the people of Nineveh, when they were already doomed for destruction, but God changed his heart. So how do we...
I don't see it like that. I see it as God already determined that he will save Nineveh and he will give them another chance. So Jonah didn't get there according to God's command. He didn't go there. So God kind of worked it out in so many ways to get him there. When he got him there and when he preached, people were saved and people repented and so on. But 100 years later, it was again destroyed. Anyway, it was destroyed. Because they were hard-hearted and they went back to their old ways and they did not truly permanently turn back. In Hezekiah's case also, I believe that God had already made up his mind to grant him life. You know, God is not trying to kill him. God is not intending to kill him. But he had to come to his senses and he had to get right. And his fasting may have helped him to get right instead of getting God right. God was not making a mistake so that he was making a correction. He was wrong. He was wrong. He was wrong. He was right. He was right. God gave him the blessing.
The fasting and praying was to make him repent.
To cause a change in him. It's an established law. So God cannot change.
The next question is like, Dear Pastor, faith teaching versus positive mindset. How to differentiate? Heathens also developed this kind of a belief system and started to speak. And they are talking about speaking to be well. Part two, this person also asking, "When I don't see things happening after believing in my heart and speaking out the word, what should I do? What is the maximum threshold?" "How long have you been in this world?" Number one is in the positive mindset versus faith teaching.
That's a very good question. Positive mindset versus faith mindset. I had the question also a long time ago. I had the same question in my mind. What is the difference between positive thinking? I've read all the books by Norman Vincent Peale, people like Robert Schuler and so on. They are into positive thinking, alright? And I've also read some worldly books. All the positive thinking speakers or motivational speakers, most of them, not all, but most of them are theologically trained people that know the Bible also, that were one-time preachers. For example, Audis and Sweat Modern is a very famous writer whose books have been sold by the hundreds of thousands of copies from early 1900s. He had a magazine called Success, which went 50,000 copies every month in 1900, year 1900 and so on. So famous he was. Amazing writer in positive thinking. I've read many of these things and I like their stories, motivational story. I like them. I have no objection. Positive thinking is better than negative thinking, if you ask me. So if you got nothing, if somebody told you to think positively, that's still fine, I think. But there is a big leap between positive thinking and faith thinking or faith believing, you know. Positive thinking tells you that you can do your best, that you can be your best. Whatever you are, whatever intelligence you have, completely it can be tapped and 100% of it, potential, your potential can be realized. You can be your best if you only believe in yourself. That's what they are saying. Faith thinking says, "Not that I can do my best, I can do the impossible." Because God is the one that is in me who gives me the will and the do. He gives me the desire to do things and the thought to do things and he makes that possible so that I go beyond the threshold of my potentiality. I cross my potential. I begin to do things that are totally impossible for me. Because faith thinking puts God on the top, you know. It's not my thinking. It is God giving me what to think. You see? That is the difference. We think God's thoughts. We think God's will and so on. And the second question is...
"When I don't see things happening in faith, when I don't see things happening, when I believe in my heart and also confessing with my mouth, what should I do?"
Yeah, a lot of people think, take this believing in the heart and confessing with the mouth like a formula, you know, that if you believe something in your heart and confess with your mouth, it will happen. The Bible, faith teaching does not say that. Faith teaching says, "If you believe God's word, if you believe the thing that is God's will for your life and you speak it..." See, it must be God's will for you and it must be God's word and God's promise for you. Then you speak it. Then only it will happen. Not, it won't happen just because you speak it, you know. Just because you sit here and say, "I will have 10 million dollars by next year." You know, that's not going to happen, you know. What is God's will for your life? Where are you headed? What are you supposed to do? What are you going to do? What is your call in life? Are you living for God? Are you seeking to do what God wants you to do? If you go in that direction and you believe that this is what God wants me to do, this is what God has promised, this is where I'm going, this is what I'm doing, then you begin to speak it. Because now you are exercising faith in what you believe to be God's word, what you believe to be God's will for your life. If it is not God's will, you can confess it all you want. It's not going to do anything. If it's God's will, if you don't confess it, it's not going to happen. Because if you don't confess it, that means you don't even believe it in your heart. Confession is evidence that you believe it in your heart. The tank is full, so the tap is pouring water, right? So believe what God wants for your life. Believe in the will of God. Be convinced that it's God's will for you and confess it. Then only it will happen, you know.
That is faith and patience inherited. David was anointed, but it took him, only when he was 30 years, he became king.
That is another important aspect, you know. Even if it's a will of God, the timing of God is very important. What she's, what she was saying is, the timing, you know. Just because you confess, it's not like you just confess 10 times and tomorrow you'll have it, you know. It's not like that. God has a timing for everything. He knows better than us. So we must be submitted to that and in its timing, it will happen. Sometimes it can take years also. See, in the case of Abraham, 75 years old he was when God promised him a son. He was 100 years old when he got a son. Why? There's a lot of reasons for it. I can go into it, but there's a lot of reasons. God wanted him to reach a point where everybody should say that it's impossible. Then he wanted to give it to him. Because he wanted to use him as an example of faith. How faith can achieve the impossible. So he wanted to wait until he was 100. If he was 75 and he had a child, a lot of people would have said, "Well, he's an old man, slightly older, and so he got a child, so what?" When it's 100, then it's a different thing. And wife is 90. Then everybody says it's impossible. It still happens and so on, right?
So Pastor, since you touched on the will, there is a question on that. So then how do we know it's perfectly the will for me?
The primary source of knowing the will of God is the word of God. And then the Holy Spirit also. Now, when it comes to the Holy Spirit, sometimes some people will prophesy to you. Now sometimes people go searching for prophecies, you know, which I don't agree, you know, that you should go looking for people to prophesy over you to tell you the will of God. That is, I think that has gone to another extreme, you know. I remember when I was about 13 years old, a man from Kerala came to our house. My father had invited him to preach in our convention. And he preached on the day he was leaving after the meeting was over. Before going to the railway station, he prayed. We were all standing around in the house and he prayed. And when he prayed, he began to prophesy about me. His name was Mangalam Joseph. He began to prophesy over me. Now I think back, everything he said, I'm doing today. When I was 13 years old, I never thought I'll go anywhere outside of India. My father himself had never been there. My family, nobody ever went anywhere at that time. So we had not, no dreams of going anywhere, doing anything. And I had no inclination to do ministry or anything like that. But he told me that I will be preaching to thousands upon thousands of people. I'll be going all over the world. He told me everything that I'm doing, you know, today, which is unbelievable. At that time, I did not take it as anything big. But when it happened, then I looked back and I said, "Oh my God, you know, that guy already prophesied all these things and it happened." So I believe that there is truly a prophetic ministry and it can be that somebody prophesies and it will happen to you, you know. But the thing is, to seek the will of God mainly through prophecies is not a good thing. I think in the New Testament times, everybody has the Holy Spirit inside of you and it's a totally different story. In the Old Testament times, David, when he wanted to go to war, he sent word to the prophets, said, "Can I go or not? Tell me." So when the prophet told him only, he went. Because God did not speak to everybody. He spoke only to certain anointed people. But today, the case is that God speaks to each and every one of us and he guides us through the inward witness. That's another thing, you see. Inward witness, not through audible. God can speak anyway. He can speak through audible voice also. But normally, he does not do. I think if we spoke through audible voice, this building will come down, you know. So God doesn't speak through audible voice so that everybody can hear normally. Normally, I'm talking about normally. I don't mean to say that God never speaks through audible voice. I'm saying normally, God speaks through inward witness. That needs some training and practice to listen to the inward witness. You begin to sense it and you become more and more sensitive to it and you are able to discern it more correctly as you go along. It's like walking with God and learning how to listen to him and to know his will and so on. But the word of God is very important. Word of God lays out general principles concerning the will of God. And if anybody prophesies and if it doesn't go along with the word of God, you know, you should not take it as anything. And you should not go search for a prophecy. If anybody prophesies over you also, it must be only taken as a confirmation to what God has already spoken inside of you. If God has already spoken inside of you, this person prophesying over you may give you something as a confirmation. But at the same time, you should not say, "God has spoken something to me, so I'm going to go to the prophet and seek confirmation." You should not seek out a prophet like that, you know. But if it so happens, a confirmation comes through another prophet, that's fine, you know, of something that God has already spoken to you. That's my stand on prophecies, you know.
Thank you, Pastor. So this person is asking, "If you are constantly speaking about material blessing, more, will it hinder people from going out for the gospel on the unreached places? Since going out to the needy people and, you know, the missions and so on and so forth, they have to live with a lot of sacrificial life. They have to live a simple life and so on and so forth." So if you are constantly speaking about material blessing, why don't you go to the places that are not reached?
Yeah, that's a nice question. I have a series on Hebrews chapter 11 and particularly the verses from verse 34 and so on, Hebrews chapter 11, the last few verses, which talk about people who were killed, who suffered and died and so on for the sake of their faith and so on. I've explained it thoroughly there. I invite you to go to our playlist in revsem.org in our website or you go to your YouTube channel, AFT Church channel, go to the playlist and "Living by Faith" is the name of the series. And that's a Hebrews 11 series. I preach verse by verse on Hebrews 11. Those, I've preached like 15 messages or so on just those few verses, fully explaining this whole thing about suffering and so on, alright? Just because we preach about material prosperity, it does not mean that we believe that we should not sacrifice anything. We should live a life of luxury and never have any sacrifice about us, you know. I don't believe in that. I myself have sacrificed a lot of things, you know. We used to go into small villages and do ministry and so on. Like I said, I will sit in the street and eat because that's the only hotel you get. And I have slept in cow sheds, basically, in villages. And whatever you have to do, you have to do to preach the gospel, you know. And there's no problem for me, even today. But the thing is, I don't come to Singapore and search for a cow shed, you know. That's trying to be one extreme, you know, that I, because I believe that I should live only in a cow shed or something like that. I don't go to places like Singapore or anywhere, even Chennai, and look for the lowest kind of place to live because I'm trying to save some money for God. Because I think God has no money problem, you know. God is able to meet all our needs. You need to think fairly, honestly, you know. You should not, you should not think of God as a miserly person who does not want his children to have anything. That kind of attitude is what we detest and we do not like. God is a generous God. God blesses us. Particularly material blessings are promised in the Bible. If you're not going to talk about it, then what are you going to do about all the things that it says about material blessings? Material blessings are to be part of life because we are partly a material being. We are not just a spiritual being. And that's why I said, if you're going to marry a person, all aspects of life is important. A person must be spiritual, but also a person must be able to produce some money by working. Otherwise, you cannot say, "Well, all I want is a husband who can pray and fast and live for God." But what are you going to do about food, you know? How are you going to pay your rent? You need a husband who can earn also, who has some sense to do the right thing for his family and so on, you see. Because your life is material also. So why do we dismiss the material part of life and embrace only the spiritual? We need to embrace the whole. See, when you talk about spirit, soul and body, material and spiritual and all, that is only for teaching, we must separate it so that we can understand it. But you cannot actually separate it. You cannot separate me into two beings, spiritual being and material being. I am one being. I am both spiritual and material. I may be very spiritual and I may be speaking in tongues 10 hours a day and praising God and all that, but then I'm hungry also. I got to go eat. And there are certain foods I like and I'd love to have that food if it's possible, you know. Because I'm a material being. So there's nothing wrong talking about material. In fact, if you don't talk about material things, you're going to miss something very important. You're going to have people that are totally dissatisfied with life, living in failure because of their wrong thinking about material aspect of life. They're living in poverty because they think God wants poverty. They glorified poverty and they live like that. And they never hear the truth, you see. That I see a lot. See, I don't preach on prosperity all the time. You go and examine my history of last 40 years of preaching in India. And I started preaching 50 years ago, actually. But 40 years I've been preaching in India. Next year, it will be 40 years of Indian church pastor ministry. I've preached so long and you go, everything that I've preached, almost everything. In the first two, three, four years, we didn't record, but after that, we have recorded. More than 35 years, we have recordings at least of audio. And last 20 years or so, we have had recording of video also. You go and see what all the, what is the series I've preached on. And you see how much I've preached on prosperity. You know, it can be only a small percentage, but I have preached on it from time to time. But I've preached on every subject. For example, 1992, I started preaching on Romans for eight years. Every Sunday morning, verse by verse, I preached on Romans. Yet some people think that I only preach prosperity. And some people have tagged me as a prosperity preacher, or he's a prosperity preacher. Yeah, I have preached on prosperity. I have preached on prosperity for 20 by 30 weeks, 40 weeks at one time, alright? But I have preached for 365 weeks on Romans continuously, every Sunday morning. And I have preached on Ephesians for eight years also. Six chapters took six and a half years to complete. On Bible study days, on Tuesday nights. In my church, people come, whether I'm preaching prosperity or Romans or Ephesians, a number of people come, you know. We are not lopsided. We are not preaching just one thing and leaving out the other thing. We preach the entire Bible. Like for example, if you attended our church now, in the month of February 2024, or if you attended any time since 2023 January, if you've been attending our church Sundays and Tuesdays and Fridays, three days we have church. Sundays, four services. Tuesday, two Bible studies. Friday, two prayer meetings. If you attended our church, I'll tell you what you will get. On Sundays, you will get the Gospel of Mark, Gospel according to Mark, passage by passage, covering from the first chapter, first verse, all the way to the end. That's what you'll get on Sundays, all four services, Gospel of Mark. Tuesday, if you come, you'll get Romans. 30 years later, I'm doing it again. It's being video recorded now. Romans in English and Tamil, separately, one hour each, Bible study. Every Tuesday, for the last one year, first chapter, it took 37 weeks to get over. I've preached. And if you come Fridays, we're going through the Book of Psalms. And I'm teaching people how to pray using the Psalms. Praying the Bible, it is called, a series. So where am I preaching? Last two years, I have not touched on prosperity, you know. But do I believe in prosperity? I certainly do believe in prosperity. Should you preach on prosperity? I certainly believe I should preach on it. Do you know, I preached some prosperity and some related subjects like success I preached on. And then I preached on one subject called, "How to be free from debt." You won't believe. I preached on Tuesday nights, Bible study. At that time, the church was small, about 150 people used to attend Bible study. And when I started preaching on how to be free from debt, the church started overflowing. We had to put hundreds of chairs outside the church because every other person there is in debt. Debt is a big problem. They're coming to church with a big burden in their hearts. They're always coming, saying, "Pastor, please pray. I'm in debt. I'm sinking. I feel suicidal. I don't know what to do about my debt problem." And we never speak about it. We are only talking about heaven, you know. Who's in third heaven? Who's in seventh heaven?
When is Jesus coming?
When is Jesus coming? Whether we're going to have tribulation or no tribulation, we're going to fly away or the kingdom is going to come and all this business. And we never touch on how to be free from debt. I took and preached for many weeks on how to be free from debt. You know how many people became free from debt? You come to our church. If you call for testimony, so many people will raise their hands. They came there. One guy came and showed me credit cards. He lifted up his credit card wallet like this. It was all the way down here. Every card maxed out. He's an MBA. He was earning quite well. He was a manager of a bank at that time. Completely in debt, sinking. And he's a management consultant and so on.